May we have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we'll move on to public participation. We'll start with appointments to boards and commissions.
Okay, and I'm going to do this and hopefully I'll get this right. But before I appoint the people who are going to serve their new terms, I want to thank everyone who is ending a term. There's a long list of people here. I won't be able to go through them all. But the city of Oxford would not work without its citizen volunteers to boards and commissions. It's often unsung service. It's uncompensated for sure. And so I want to thank everyone who has served the city of Oxford and wish them well. So but I would like to nominate, I would like to make a motion that we appoint to the planning commission Cory Watt, Matt Arbuckle, and Ann Webster to fill the unexpired term vacated by Steve Dana. I would like to nominate Dana Miller to the Historic and Architectural Preservation Commission. I'd like to nominate Marilyn Heflin to the Board of Appeals, Building and Housing. To Climate Action Steering Committee, we nominate Venus Harvey to the Oxford Parking and Transportation Board, nominate Carla Blackmar to the unexpired, I guess it's an unexpired term. To McCullough Hyde Foundation, appointments, we're going to take the foundation of the hospitals nomination of Ms. Julie Joffe and Ms. Dolores Rome Hudson. To the Public Arts Commission, Tara Trueblood to an unexpired term. To the Student Community Relations Commission, Matt Arbuckle and Steve Chaffin. Just to note that there's vacancy in there so that we can find a resident from the Mile Square as per our code. And the Housing Advisory Commission, Mike De La Sandro.
Okay, congratulations to the new people and some not new people.
Is there a second?
Need a second?
Oh, my gosh.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Awesome. Okay, so we're going to move on to a public hearing for the 2024 tax budget. May we have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Stephanie Gray, Acting Assistant Finance Director.
Hello. This is the annual tax budget to be submitted for the coming 2024 to the Butler County Tax Commission in accordance with the requirements stipulated by the Ohio Revised Code. Approval by the legislative body is required by July 15th and is due to the county by July 20th. The tax budget required for the county is essentially a preliminary budget estimate for the next year. Beginning in August, we will undertake our normal detailed line item budget analysis and preparation. We will spend approximately three months of intensive preparation on our detailed budget. And the final approved budget will then be submitted to the county budget commission to replace this preliminary estimate. This tax budget provides our first glimpse at the 2024 general fund budget. We have prepared this budget with an approximate 0% change from the 2023 amended budget.
Any questions?
And so Doug, is this really just kind of to prove to the auditor that our finances are good? I mean, it's less about our purposes than it is reporting outwards, right?
Yeah, but it's also important that we submit it so that we can get our local government funding from the county.
Okay.
And then it gives us an estimate of our property taxes that we use when we do the regular budget. So it's a somewhat of an outdated formality, but we're required to do it. And as Stephanie said, you know, the more intensive work begins now as we put together an annual appropriation for your consideration and also capital budget. So yes.
Okay.
Okay, may we have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then next we have a presentation from the League of Women Voters, and we have Kathy Brinkman.
Hello, thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight. I am Kathy Brinkman. I'm the Communication Director for the League of Women Voters of Oxford, and I'm providing this information on behalf of our organization. To keep on task and respect your time, I have some notes that I'm going to be referring to. The League of Women Voters is nonpartisan. We have a 100-plus-year history of educating and informing the community about voting issues. In addition to important efforts like the Voter Information Guide and the Candidate Forum that occur in the months leading up to an election, we work every day to make sure that voters know about important aspects of Ohio's voting laws and upcoming deadlines. Tonight, I'm here to highlight recent changes to Ohio's voting laws and to emphasize the need for voters to be aware of the August 8th election and issue one that is on the ballot in August. The League of Women Voters encompasses all of Tallowanda School District, so I'm also presenting this information at the township trustee meetings in our area because we believe that this information is important for everyone to know. So first, a few key changes about the voting laws. For early voting and Election Day voting, both of which occur in person, some of the documents that were acceptable in the past in order to prove voter identity are no longer acceptable. The no longer acceptable documents include utility bills, bank statements, pay stubs, county-issued veterans cards, and the last four digits of social security number. Under current Ohio law, the only acceptable documents are an Ohio BMV-issued driver's license or ID card, US military, US Department of Veterans Affairs, or Ohio National Guard card, and this is a new one, or an Ohio, or a US passport. The individuals most impacted by the new requirements are the elderly, the disabled, college students, and those without transportation. Some individuals will have no trouble switching to another form of ID if they're aware that they need to do so. Others will have much greater difficulty. They have to know that they need a new ID, and they have to be able to get to the BMV in order to obtain it. As we know, there are no BMVs in Oxford. The Ohio IDs are available free of charge, but for the elderly, the disabled, and those without transportation, the process of obtaining the ID is the hard part. Individuals without the necessary documentation can use an alternative form of voting, vote by mail, instead of voting in person. They can do so by providing the last four digits of their social security number on a paper vote-by-mail ballot application. In recent elections, the Secretary of State has mailed absentee ballot applications to all Ohio voters, but by law is no longer allowed to do so. This all changed in January of this year, so people have not gone through this process in an election yet. So to obtain the vote-by-mail application, one must go to the Secretary of State's website, print the form, or call the Board of Elections to obtain it. The completed application form is then mailed to or dropped off at the Board of Elections' office in Hamilton. Then voters repeat that process when the ballot itself comes. They complete the ballot, they acquire the postage, they mail it, or they go to the far side of Hamilton to drop it off. Another new restriction is a shortened window to return vote-by-mail ballots. In the past, absentee ballots returned via US mail needed to arrive at the Board of Elections within 10 days of Election Day. Now the deadline is four days. To our knowledge, there has not been an effort from the state to educate voters about the new requirements, so we're concerned that voters know about the changes, and we're working to inform them. The timeline to do so has become more urgent now that there's an August election coming up. In speaking with voters, what has become clear to us is that most voters don't know that there's an August election, and if they do know, they don't know what issue one is. They don't know that there's an important issue on the ballot. The League of Women Voters is part of a coalition of 240 organizations united against issue one. It's interesting to note that all former Ohio governors and attorneys general of both parties are against it as well. Issue one would change Ohio's citizen-led initiative ballot process. Currently, if Ohioans feel their representatives are not being responsive to things that matter most to them, they can join together in a grassroots effort to get an initiative on the ballot. As it currently stands, this effort is challenging, time-consuming, and expensive, and if issue one passes, this process will become even harder. So what would issue one change? Well, there's three things to remember about issue one. The first is that to get an initiative on the ballot currently, you have to get signatures from 44 counties in Ohio, out of a total of 88. With issue one, you would have to get signatures from every single one of those 88 counties. It would be equal to 5% of the gubernatorial, the number of votes cast in the last gubernatorial for each county. Additionally, the second thing, issue one removes the 10-day period during which petition errors can be corrected. This is called a cure process, and I don't think it's well-understood, but it's important because the way things stand now, you need 442,958 signatures to get an initiative on the ballot, so almost 443,000 statewide for any new initiative. So that's equal to 10% of the votes that were cast in the last gubernatorial election. So it takes a long time to gather that many signatures. And what happens is that some signatures, when they're turned into the Secretary of State and then distributed out to the County Board of Elections to check the signatures, some of them aren't good for a number of reasons. There's all kinds of requirements. You have to sign in ink. Well, what if it looks more like pencil? But the primary reason is that people move. It takes a long time to gather the signatures. It's a lot of signatures. And when the address is checked, that person is not, some of those people are not registered to vote in that county. So even one signature short from one county in the initiative doesn't get on the ballot. But the way things stand now, there's a 10-day cure period. And during that 10-day cure period, after the signatures are checked, organizers have the ability to go out and get more signatures. So let's say they turn them all in, in all good faith, they had all that they thought that they needed, and more usually, and then some are rejected. So they have 10 days to go out and get more and get to that threshold. By completely eliminating the 10-day cure period, the signature gathers would have to pad the number of signatures they get upfront even more. So the task becomes enormous. So those are the first two things. 88 counties instead of 44, no cure process whatsoever. So if an initiative gets on the ballot, if one were to get on the ballot, a 60% supermajority of voters have to approve it, replacing the 50% plus one super, or simple majority that we currently have. So citizen-led initiatives would become nearly impossible to put on the ballot, extremely difficult to pass if they are on the ballot. So we believe that the essence of our democracy is majority rule. This would bring about minority rule, a minority of voters making decisions for Ohio. For these reasons, we have endorsed a no vote on issue one. But we also believe that the essence of our democracy is an informed and active voting base, so we encourage all voters to review the particulars of issue one, come to their own decision, and see if they think this is best for Ohio, and of course, to vote. So finally, the last thing that I want to say, what can the city do? We believe the city has an opportunity to assist. At a very basic level, the city could use social media to inform voters about the August 8th election and link to the Butler County Board of Elections' website for more information about key dates and identification requirements. I've appreciated the recent Facebook posts on biodiversity. It's a great partnership that's resulted in these posts coming from the city administration's social media. We'd be happy to partner on a voting initiative. Oxford City Council, on the other hand, could decide that a resolution opposing issue one is appropriate. If that's the case, we're available to assist in any way we can. So again, thank you for the opportunity to speak. If you have questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you so much for that. It is so important that everyone gets out the word as much as possible, so it will be interesting to work with you going forward. I do have a question about, so the new IDs would have to have the address that matches where they're registered to vote, correct?
It has to be, the difference between the old and new is you, no, the address does not, the Ohio driver's license or Ohio ID does not have to have a current address. No, it does not. But it must be an Ohio driver's license. It can't be Michigan, it can't be Illinois if you come from there and have decided to vote, has to be Ohio. And that's really the problem with a lot of students who came from out of state and registered to vote in Ohio and maintained their out-of-state driver's license because they're not required to change, but they cannot use that out-of-state driver's license to identify themselves at the polls. So they can no longer use the statement from the university that shows their address because that's not an acceptable form. And so if they choose to get an Ohio driver's license or an Ohio ID, they relinquish their other, their other state ID, and it's unknown what the impact will be on their financial aid. Maybe nothing, maybe there will be an impact, it's unclear. So it puts students in that situation, which is a lot of students at a very difficult decision as to what to do.
So I would just commend you on your ability to communicate this in such an objective and nonpartisan way because it's the most crassly partisan thing I've seen. But the fact that you could communicate with people on the objective things, I really, you know, I thank you for your work and we'll, you know, let's communicate on the language of a resolution. You have your rationale, and we could convert that into a resolution because I suspect those of us up here who believe in democracy and majority rule may be in support of a resolution in opposition to issue one in August.
I think a majority of council members have already made personal comments at the council meetings, saying...
But we'll bring a resolution forward.
Great, let us know if we can help.
Education effort as well, that would be fantastic.
Yes, yes, we're working hard to educate voters about what all the issues are.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Okay, we'll move on to public comments. Anyone wishing to address council by items not on the agenda or on the consent agenda, please come forward at this time and state your name and address for the record. You'll have five minutes to say whatever you want. See, oh, yeah, come on up.
Craig Erickson, 5780, Morning Sun Room, here in Oxford. A question, agenda or not on agenda tonight, 5:25 North Campus.
Can you...
It is on the agenda.
Yes. Would you like to save your comment for when we bring it up on the agenda?
It was just a question if it's on the agenda, I couldn't tell. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, seeing no other public comments, may we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Are there any items to be removed? All in favor of approving the consent agenda?
Aye.
All right, so we'll move on to the first resolution.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with Industrial Communications and Sound utilizing the American Rescue Plan Act funds for the installation, maintenance, and support of audiovisual equipment at the courthouse at a cost of $56,162 plus a contingency in the amount of $5,616 for a total cost not to exceed $61,778.20.
Do we have a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
All right, Jessica.
Good evening. We are here this evening to request the use of the American Rescue Plan dollars for the infrastructure to improve the audiovisual equipment in this building. It would be for new microphones, a new video switch for streaming. So we've had some glitch, look at Heather's face. We've had some glitches with streaming, so our hope is that that would improve some of those performance issues. We're going to retain our cameras. They actually work pretty well, they're relatively new. And then also, in addition, ICS will provide emergency service. So if something happens after hours, we have a phone number we can call to say, you know, please help, we have a public meeting, can you help us get our microphones or cameras back online? We did do a fair amount of reference checks, and Pat O'Malley, our IT technician, did drive down to Cincinnati to see a similar setup and was pretty impressed with how it's working. And so we would recommend approval.
Okay, are there any public comments? Seeing none, council discussion?
It's about time.
Looking at David.
I'm just, this is just one of the things that maybe, when we went through COVID, one of the benefits was, is we experimented with ways of engaging people remotely, that we've gone back to the traditional thing. We're, we broadcast outwards. Given state laws or any, you know, A, I mean, and it was part of capacity thing, we didn't have the technology able to do that. Will we ever get back to some kind of hybrid thing where people can engage us remotely? And will this technology help that at all, or are we just kind of trying to do a better job with the way we've always done it?
This current scope of this project does not allow for like interactive public comment because our current laws do not allow for that.
Don't allow for the, those comments to be put into public record, or?
I'm going to let City Manager Doug Elliott perhaps answer that question.
Well, I mean, you know, citizens can submit comments to that revised software, and Heather makes those available to the city council, but if you're talking about during a meeting, you know, we don't have the capacity to do that. And I don't believe that we can deviate from the Open Meetings Act. You know, we were allowed to have those meetings when we're, during COVID, but then I forget the date that it, you know, we had to go back to our regular meeting agendas, so. But as Jessica said, what you're voting on tonight is to basically upgrade our existing system. And, you know, but we can look at that further and see, you know, if there's some legislation we could recommend to our state legislative body to maybe allow something like that.
It seems out of date and old-fashioned to allow an electronic communication that happens before the meeting, but you can't have an audiovisual electronic representation during the meeting, but...
But yeah, I'm just wondering, like, I get that they want us to meet in person, but one of the benefits of the remote was people were able to offer comments, and we would turn on them, and they could speak remotely. They couldn't leave their home, but they could speak to us. And I wonder whether state law prohibits us from doing that, or whether, I mean, is there any reason a remote public comment couldn't come in through Zoom? We're all here. Is there anything that prohibits us, or is that just a technological thing, is that hardware, software?
I think that that would be a matter that you could take up and look at your council rules to see how you want to handle public comment. You certainly could expand that option to include the use of technology. I'm certainly aware that there are, there's, I think there are a couple of communities that have continued to use video to meet. But again, that's really a broader discussion for all of council to make. So I think that if this council is interested in exploring expanded use of technology to create more interaction with the public or provide that opportunity, we can look into that. I think it requires some consensus of council to say, this is what we'd like to see, can we do it?
But this is mainly a hardware package, right? So that doesn't hurt us, or it helps us better project outwards, and then if we wanted to weave it with something like Zoom or something in the future. Anyway, I don't want to, it's a separate topic, but since we're talking technology in this room, that's just my question.
I don't, I think, yes, today is a hardware package of microphones and a streaming board, but if you're interested, like, we could explore that, and then we would probably have to look at another technology upgrade to allow for something like that. So stay tuned on what that would be.
And one other thing I might add is, is that we really, the starting place for whatever model that you think you'd like to explore is we got to go to the charter. I haven't looked at it, I can look at it while the meeting's going on, but I suspect it may say something would be interpreted to you must meet in person.
I don't think our charter deals.
And then just, so we can look at that, but it would be like a who, who, like which staff would do it and what technology would be needed. So we can explore that and get back to you. But for today, new microphones and a streaming board.
All right, can we have a voice vote for all in favor?
Aye.
All right, all passed. That passes, so we'll move on to the second resolution.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to expedite the rezoning process and join St. Mary Development Corporation as a partner in the affordable housing funding application.
Do we have a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Jessica.
Yes, thank you. So we had a work session on this earlier today, but for the public who weren't able to hear that, the city has been approached by St. Mary's Development Corporation, which is a nonprofit housing developer, to apply for funding to build 50-plus units of affordable housing. This would be for low-to-moderate-income individuals between the ranges of 30% to 70% of the area median income. They propose to build 50 units of one, two, and three bedrooms for families and/or seniors to be determined based on the scoring criteria in the grant. This development will have supportive services offered by St. Mary Development Corporation, and the initial concept will have the property managed and maintained by Neighborhood Housing Services, who we already have a contract with to help us with affordable housing. St. Mary's will apply for the grant through the Ohio Housing Finance Agency, OFA, and it's made up of two parts, a 4% low-income housing tax credit, LIHTC, and bond gap funds. It is competitive, and so they would be an application among many. Mary Day Park and 603, 607 West Chestnut Street have both been identified as parcels of land that meet the funding program scoring criteria. This land has been selected because it's under city control and nearby amenities such as groceries and pharmacies. We will need to select a parcel of land and then rezone it to allow for the size of apartment units the funding requires. To apply, the St. Mary's Development Corporation must have a letter from the city saying that the identified land is zoned properly for this type of development, so it has to already be zoned that way, not a promise of future zoning. The resolution is seeking support from council to expedite our zoning change process by doing the following. Fast-track the planning commission decision to the council, the immediate next council meeting, and then we will need to pass the zoning change ordinance as an emergency to allow the zoning change to be completed before the proposal, the funding proposal deadline. We will also need to develop a development agreement with St. Mary's with a 75-year ground lease or sell the land to them. We staff recommend a 75-year ground lease. I think I had a little bit more. If awarded, St. Mary's will go through the entire planning and review process before any construction. However, this first step of the zoning change and development agreement must occur before the application can be submitted. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any public comments? I can let you know when the five minutes are up.
Thank you. Anne Fuhrer, I live on Dana Drive in Southern Knowles. I'm speaking tonight as former board member, officer, and executive director of TOPS. I am the facilitator for Oxford Citizens for Peace and Justice, and in that role, I'm interested in promoting council decisions that support basic human rights for the most vulnerable members of the community. I attended the Housing Advisory Commission meeting yesterday and the council work session this evening. I communicated with Mayor Snively and Assistant City Manager Green by email earlier today. I am very much in supportive efforts to work with potential developers to increase affordable housing stock in Oxford and applaud initiatives involving proven nonprofit developers and permanent supportive housing. However, I agree with Councilor Bracken, any plans for development in Mary Day Park should not jeopardize the future of FRC and TOPS' one-stop facility. I am glad you've consulted with TOPS' director and board member. I am glad you've consulted with TOPS Director and Board Member. I believe their endorsement of any plan for utilization of Mary Day Park is essential. Collaborative partnership with them is needed to enact the city's support for sustainability that was part of communication with county commissioners before they would award the $1.5 million in ARPA funds. I understand that a legal review of use of the park for development of housing is necessary before this project can move forward. This morning, I also contacted Laura Osborne, who is president of the TOPS Board. When, on February 6th, 2019, she and City Manager Elliott signed a lease agreement that would have allowed TOPS to build a proposed one-stop in Mary Day Park. Laura suggested in writing to me that the donation of Mary Day Park to the city of Oxford by Ray and Mary Day in 2009 specified that Mary Day is intended for public benefit only. That TOPS was cleared to build on Mary Day Park in 2019 because TOPS operates for public benefit. Laura's understanding is that the city is prohibited from putting housing there. In 2019, Laura discussed this matter with City Manager Elliott, who did the legwork for the lease on this. So clearly, now a legal review is needed. I look forward to hearing more about these issues. 50 additional units of affordable housing would be fantastic, but not if it jeopardizes the sustainability of TOPS and FRC's future. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Seeing none, council discussion?
I'm in support as long as it's that. Who's Mary taking up the FRC one stop?
I put this in some historical context, which is just a few years ago, you know, housing was not even a serious policy agenda item. I mean, it was a, it was an agenda item, but we had no idea how we were going to be able to make affordable housing happen in our community. We've really climbed the learning curve. And part of that comes through the partnerships with the people who know how to do this. And so this is, this is the product of us building our capacity with partners to look at how we can do it. So now we actually have a developer with much experience in building what seems to be high-quality housing for low-to-moderate income people and for seniors in our region. I mean, built thousands of units, it looks like, in, in, in the region. Looking to potentially do something in Oxford that would be really a game changer for affordable housing. I mean, 50 to 100 units of affordable housing in one fell swoop is really super impactful. The question is, where does it go? And, and there's limited city-owned pieces of property. But we have a few that are contenders, not just one. We have a few, each which involves trade-offs. If it were at the Mary Day Park site, we have to make sure that it, it doesn't compromise the recreational goals of the site, the, the TOPS facility. But if designed properly, that's a five-acre site. You know, like, there's enough room there to serve a bunch of different needs if it's legally possible. And, and there's a parcel on Chestnut. It will involve a rezoning, and so what really asked for today is to just, this resolution is to, is kind of a fast-tracking process so that we can meet that. You know, I'm a planner. I believe in the deliberative thing. But our comprehensive plan was a very deliberative process. And it said loud and clear, people want affordable housing in our community and they want us to be entrepreneurial about it. And so to me, that's the deliberative part. If we have to be nimble with our zoning, I mean, when it comes to the Mary Day Park, it's, it's zone general business, which I'm not sure, 100% sure why it was ever zoned that anyway. So we're, we're going to need to rezone that in order to accomplish the uses of that property for housing, one way or the other. So whether we do it on a fast-track schedule or not, like, if, if there's an opportunity to have a developer do this, I'm, you know, I think we could fast-track this and stay true to our comprehensive plan and our deliberative process. So, yeah.
Let me just, I just wanted to comment on the, the lease to TOPS. There were two leases executed, one that Anne mentioned. And then we executed the second lease because the first one expired. I believe the second one has expired. But the, there were two deeds. One that was done in, I think, 1999, but was, 1997, thank you, but was not recorded. And when I came on board in 2007, this issue came up because they kept paying the property taxes on it, the Day family, and realized that this was supposed to be paid by the city. So we executed a second deed and made payment to the Days for the back taxes. And so that was taken care of. But the deed does not talk about how that land shall be used. But there's an agreement that was written in 1997, I guess, because that would have been the first deed that talks about using it for recreation and leisure services. And we decided to lease it to TOPS because we felt, although it probably didn't fit the criteria of recreation and leisure services, that it was going to benefit the two mobile home parks, especially if they had a tornado shelter. But the deed itself does not talk about any restrictions on the land. And it doesn't talk about this agreement going to, you know, the, going with the land. So, you know, definitely, I'll get with Chris and we'll review that and make sure we're on solid ground. Because now if we're proposing a housing project, we might hear from the new owner of the mobile home parks about competition or something. I, you know, I don't know. But we certainly want to make sure that we're on, shall we say, solid ground moving forward. So we will review that. But I just wanted to clarify a few things, just so that we are on the same page moving forward. Thank you.
As I understand this resolution, there are two action items. The first one is to rezone that property, which I agree with Ms. Pruthers. It seems a little weird the way it's zoned currently. So I'm pretty open to a rezoning that can enable greater benefit to the city. And then the second piece of this is to enter into the partnership with this developer in pursuit of this particular project. Now, that being said, that is what I'm looking at this on face value. During our work session, I had some other things to say about it as far as the long-term goals of this. However, as somebody who wants to be on council and send a signal to developers, potential business owners, and other external investors that this is a place of choice that you should have to consider your particular project, I would like to move this forward. Now, if we have certain findings that come back and it just doesn't work out, then it doesn't work out. But I still want to send out the signal that if you're willing to invest in Oxford, we want to help. And that's why I'm in favor of this resolution.
I was just going to ask if we need to be specific about the property that we're going to pursue moving forward and also whether it's a lease versus.
I believe, well, we will pursue a, a land lease, like a, a long-term lease with them if they'll accept it. And they, they indicated verbally that they would, but now it's time to like then develop those details. And then second, I do believe that this time we're going to pursue trying to see if we can make Mary Day work. And if it doesn't, we would perhaps pivot and look at Chestnut. But our, our intention, based on your feedback during the work session, was to look at Mary Day area first.
Thanks.
I would love to, if they were willing to allow tours, if they have other apartments, just to kind of see what their examples are, photos. And sustainability is something that can easily be baked into this with that wonderful example in Chicago. And I'm happy to share that organization's name and different examples of how beautifully done low-income housing can be.
I will share that with them. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
And I would strongly support that too, the more sustainability that can be built in here environmentally rather than just.
And safer for their health as well, because that is something that is commonly ignored in these poorly maintained apartments that they just don't care how well they're doing inside their apartment. So if we can create this, a shining example of what we should all aspire to be, I feel like that's deserved regardless of how much money you make.
And I would say also that right now, we're looking at Mary Day. And I think it makes a lot of sense for that because of the proximity of local services. And I think because of the development mix out there, we can imagine it quite easily. But I will say that, for example, if that site doesn't work, I am open. We do have property on Chestnut Street. And I think that to move forward, let's be honest, that building more multifamily will be somewhat of a change and it's going to involve some changes around town. But I think our comprehensive plan gave the really clear signal that like flexibility is what it's going to take in order to achieve these housing goals. Like, we can't be exclusionary on one side and get the inclusionary housing on the other. So, so to me, like, if this is a high-quality development, I can imagine this in multiple parts of town. It happens to be, we own these two parcels, but I'm, if Mary Day doesn't work, then we have another parcel that hopefully could work too. And there are other apartment buildings down there that provide low-to-moderate income housing and that. So, yeah.
I think that's a wonderful point, because if done right, it is a place that is something to be proud of. It is not a blight on the neighborhood. It should not be something people are afraid of. So when we talk about, yeah, the centralization of poverty and this is something that we need to be more inclusive around town. And if the developer, which it sounds like this developer is awesome, if done right, this could be something really exciting.
I'll share these comments with them. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so we'll move on to our ordinances. We have no first readings, but the second reading, there's been a request by the applicant to postpone to the July 18th meeting. Do we need a motion for that? I think I still have to read it, right?
Yeah, I think you do. And then we get a motion to postpone, sorry.
An ordinance granting requests of the Ohio Association of Regular Baptist Churches to connect to Anne Orkston, the city water and sanitary utilities to serve a proposed 92-unit hotel at 525 North Campus Avenue outside the Oxford corporate limits. Okay, so, so I feel bad because he wanted to speak on this.
Yeah, before we go into the motions, is there an opportunity so we do this? Because once it's moved and tabled or whatever, it's, if the people came to speak to this, how do we do it?
Yeah, yeah. And I would wait for the.
We'd have a motion and public comment and then request a.
Well, I've just not made that motion yet. Just say if there are any public comments.
Till our comments.
Okay. Any public comments? I think this is the one you wanted to speak to.
You think he just wanted to know if it was on the agenda?
Oh, is that it? Oh, he didn't want to talk to it? If you would like to say something, the floor is yours. If you could say your name and address again, you can have five minutes.
Sure. My name is Craig Erickson, and I live at 5280 Morning Sun Road, bordered Oxford, three sides of our property. And I followed this project since January, when the county first contacted me that there had been almost a near emergency request to zone that particular property. And so the county planning commission had been through this and had conducted review. The only thing I would comment is that if the project is approved, is to refer back to the approval of the recommendations by the county board. And at that case, they had setbacks, a provision for eight-foot berms surrounding the property, and any outdoor lighting would be directed inward toward the project and not extend outwards. And that was their recommendation for if approved. And that was fairly straightforward. So, secondly, the several meetings that have been proposed, it's interesting, the developer did not show up for one of the meetings at the county. And that was for the conditional use. And didn't show up for the first meeting of the planning commission. And I think the first meeting that we have seen, or I've seen, where there has been a public presentation was the last council meeting. So I think there can be very many favorable reasons for this. But I think to keep in mind, as we understand it, this is a very large project for Oxford. It's about an $18 to $20 million project. So a lot of serious thought should be or must have gone into this by the developer. The connection of water to that property, I think, is no more than an inch and a half water pipeline that goes down to the building. It's not a massive connection whatsoever. The other thing, though, I'd like to mention in looking at the project is to try to understand that the developer that was here, this is the second person that's appeared publicly, by the way, on behalf of the developer. But to understand the ability of the developer to develop, build, and develop this project, I think key to this is to understand that if this is a Fairfield-approved project, council should know that it is an approved Fairfield project. It's possible, because the developer has only thus far just expressed an intent, not a commitment, but an intent. And this has been the way since January. And the public offices have spent a lot of time on this, based on an intent to do this and attempt to do that, attempt to do that. The original tent was like a 120-room hotel, but with only 63 parking spaces. So there was a little skepticism at first. It's been reduced now. But keeping in mind, this is about a third larger than the hotel motel down at Stewart Square. And keeping in mind that the ground space, usable space for this project really is quite limited. And it, I don't know if anybody surveyed the project, but keeping in mind and looking at it, the possibility of doing a 72-room project is going to be quite difficult, in my opinion. I think finally, that it's only fair for the council to ask of the developer if they have a commitment from Fairfield to go ahead with the project. And then also some ability to complete, demonstrated ability to complete a project. So again, it's the Arnold Reagan trust that verify. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So we will, can we do the request now?
Mm-hmm.
So there's a request by the applicant to postpone to the July 18th meeting. Do we have a second?
Motion to table until the July 19th meeting.
I would suggest using the word postpone.
Motion to postpone until the July 19th meeting.
18th.
18th meeting.
Sorry about that.
And once we second and there's no, it's a like a table and there's no more conversation, then I'm not sure if it matters, like.
I still don't think we have to vote on it.
Yeah. No, but I like, is the motion the table? What's the, what's the second on the motion table? You can't talk.
When you postpone it, you can debate.
You can, okay. Oh, I'll second that then. I'm not saying that we're going to debate it, but I'm, I just didn't want to shut down the conversation premature. So I would second Councilor O'Beal's motion that we postpone to the 18th.
We're still in council discussion about it. So we can still talk about it.
Yeah.
Would you like to talk about it?
No, other than I think we've got, I mean, just to the people who are here, I think there's a, it sounds like there's a roadmap being developed that would enable this to come into the city properly in a, in an expeditious way, but following our rules and providing all of the public feedback that the people in the city of Oxford deserve. Is that correct?
Well, yeah. So as we know, as Mr. Erickson also mentioned, this project began with the county. And it's still in the county as of right now. But Sam and I, we've had several meetings. Most recently, we met with them Friday, the hotel developers, to discuss this. They're asking for water and sanitary sewer service from the city. They were provided that, the church was provided that. But the ordinance that allowed that said it could be no bigger than a two-inch line, which, of course, is not sufficient for a hotel. a hotel. So in order to get our water and sanitary sewer, we're requesting that they annex into the city. That's about a four month process. They have asked Etta Reed, Mayor Becker, to provide the three things that we need so that an annexation petition can be submitted to the Butler County Commissioners. Once we receive that, I'll get that petition worked up and get it to the county, and that begins that process. The separate process is, you know, working through our rules and regulations, and they really don't have authority until it's in the city. But we did work with Al's Landing because we had a similar situation, that they were not in the city. The difference is that they, from the very beginning, came in and spoke to us and worked with us, and we knew that it was going to take a while. But what I'd like to see happen is that we get their information, their drawings, and they submit a, oh shoot, what is it?
Conditional use.
Conditional use application to us because there's certain criteria that they have to meet to do that. If we can get that, then we can begin our process. We just couldn't take the final step until it's in the city. That doesn't meet their timeline because they'd like to begin construction this summer. And yes, it's a Marriott Fairfield project. At our Friday meeting, we had the builder there who stressed the importance of, you know, moving forward on this project. So we're doing our best to work with them. We don't have all the answers right now, but our July 18th meeting also happens to be the meeting when their BZA meets on their conditional use. So we have more to come, but you know, ideally, I'd like to see that this project happens because I think it would be good for the community. But I want it to happen within the city, or I'm not going to recommend to the council that we provide water and sanitary sewer service. So I don't know if there are any questions you have, but as Chantel mentioned, Vice Mayor Chantel, Vice Mayor Ragoo mentioned that the developers have requested that we postpone it until July 18th.
I have one technical question.
Mm-hmm.
When that postponed period expires and it comes back, is it still a second reading?
Yes.
Okay.
And it's not an emergency, so it wouldn't be effective for 30 days, so.
But that's just a, an agreement to connect the, and be on the condition of annexation, so all those other things could be.
Yes. We, you know, we may, this may play out where we're going to recommend an agreement, you know, but we're putting this together as we move forward. You know, it's a, it's not an ideal situation, you know. We can always say, I wish this would have happened, but that doesn't change the situation we're in. I mean, ideally, if folks would have talked to us back in January, February about annexation, this could already be in the city. But that didn't happen.
Well, I would just provide, provide some assurance that one of the reasons why I think we want it in the city and to come through our process is all the opportunity to make sure that we answer all the hard questions about the project, you know? Like, how are we going to be able to serve it? Water and sewer fire, you know, police. The reason why we make hotels conditional uses is because they generate traffic and they have particular impacts on neighborhoods. So how do we design it so that we all can live with it for a really long time? The one thing I would ask, though, is that, you know, that Mr. Erickson's point about trust but verify, to the degree that if, if they say it's going to be a hotel, to the degree that they're like, ah, it seems like a reasonable condition, that we're not only just like saying, we agree to annex this property, but we agree to annex the property for the purposes described in the proposal. Like, if they don't have any problem with that, then we should do that because I just, I don't want to say yes with one vision of something, and then once we've given a water sewer and rezoning, that's, there's, at that point, there's, they have a right to do a lot of different things. So as long as they're, they're looking to build a hotel, and that's, so I would say that whether it's at that, it's our next reading, or whether it's part of the annexation, that if they propose a hotel, that we say that that's the proposed use, that the purpose of everything is for, so. But. Stipulated conditional on that. Yep, agreed.
Okay. Sounds like we're done. Can we move on to the second, second reading? Do you need to vote? Oh, yeah. Vote on, oh, vote on.
Postponing.
Roll call? Boys? It can be boys, but I can do whatever you want. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Second, second reading.
An ordinance authorizing the tax budget for the year 2024 and directing that the same be transmitted to the Butler County Auditor.
All right. Motion?
Seconded.
And then we have Acting Assistant Finance Director Stephanie Gray.
Um, I just, we have no changes for the second reading of the ordinance.
All right. Any public comments? Seeing none, council discussion? All right. Can we take a vote on this? Mr. Bretheridge?
Yes.
Mr. Bracken?
Yes.
Mr. Elrbe?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ragoo?
Yes.
And then we'll move to announcements and communications.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just have three things. I just wanted to follow up on Katie Brinkman's presentation tonight, especially on issue one. Had a chance to read an opinion piece by Thomas Suds, who is a very good writer, but he, title is Looney Tunes Lawmakers: How to Trick Ohio Voters with Weasel Word. And the weasel word is elevate. I've not seen the ballot language for the issue one, but apparently it talks about elevating the threshold that Mrs. Brinkman talked about tonight, from 50 to 60%. You know, if the council chose to raise water sewer rates or taxes and use the word elevate, I don't think we'd be here. So, but yeah. Anyway, I just wanted to share that with you. But a couple of other more important things. I wanted to let you know that we now have on the community development site, and I thank Sam and his staff, an approved rental list. We had that before and then it got dropped, and I was anxious to get it back on our webpage, on our website, I should say. So you can get on there for any apartment, look up the address and what we have listed as the occupancy, and what type of inspection occurred there, whether it's a full inspection or an outside inspection. And the reason why some might say that it's not a full inspection is because, you know, the landlord has not permitted us to go in and make that full inspection. So I might encourage parents and students, and I think Jessica shared this with Miami University, that we have this information, to look at it. And if you're renting an apartment that says exterior only inspection, you might want to question your landlord about, you know, why we weren't allowed to go in and make that inspection. We think it's important, and I'm happy that we have this information out there so that folks can see the status of that apartment. We don't have many that are listed as exterior only, but I don't know, what would you say, Sam? Maybe 5%? Something like that. So, and it also gives you the date of the most recent, recent inspection. So please take a look at that if you get a chance. It's, it's on our community development webpage section. The last thing I wanted to just comment on, you know, we have our sister city, Dufferdang, Luxembourg, and they just had a recent election, and their elections over there are a little different than ours. They have 19 members on their municipal council. They serve six year terms. They had a recent election on June 11th of this year. Their elections over there are based on proportional representation system, and that's unlike our first pass the post elections here in Oxford. So the candidates are grouped on an electoral list by party, and they have, how many parties here? I think they have, I didn't number the parties there. I think it's nine parties they have, ranging from the Greens, the Luxembourg Socialist Workers Party, the Democratic Party, Christian Social People's Party, Communist, the Pirate Party. Now, that's a new one this year, and the Left. So basically, what they have is each party can put out the maximum number of candidates equal to the members of the municipal council. So there's 19, and with nine parties, you get 171 candidates on a ballot. In Luxembourg, all registered voters are required to vote. It's the law. And that's also include non-citizens, non-Luxembourg nationals that can register and vote. But I just wanted to share with you that the Luxembourg Socialist Workers Party won the most votes and elected six members, and the Christian Social People's Party, which was the predominant party before, had the next most members, and they get five. So I expect that those two parties will form a coalition government with the two parties together for 11 candidates. Guy Altmaich, who we met when we were over this last summer, had the most votes and will become mayor, and then I think all of you know Tom Alvey, got the second most votes and will be vice mayor. So just wanted to share that with you because they're our sister city and thought you might find it interesting. Thank you. That's all I have this evening.
Mike?
Nothing tonight.
Nothing tonight.
Stephanie?
Nothing tonight.
Here comes Casey.
This is important.
Everything you say is important.
Thank you. That's the nicest thing anybody's said to me today.
Oh, thank you.
A couple of quick announcements. On June 30th is the final day of the final term for a recreation board member named Ken Bogard. He has served his, his three terms, so his nine years are up, and he is unable to continue. So I just want to publicly thank Ken for all of his service, not just with Recreation Board, but, and all the things that Ken has done for the city over the years, and much longer than I've been alive, I think he's served this city. So I want to thank him for that. He was instrumental in the Aquatic Center and that project as he's been on, been part of this board. So we'll, we'll do something for Ken, but I won't tell you what because he's probably watching, and then he'll know. So we'll, we'll keep that a secret for now. And then secondly, since this is our last meeting before Freedom Fest, I'll give an update about that event, which the parade will be Saturday, July 1st. I believe all of you are involved in some way in that parade. Some of you are riding in the carriage that will lead the parade. And then there'll be a special music fest following that at 7 o'clock. And then on Monday will be our Freedom Fest event, which you will start seeing some heavy marketing for that and all the changes that are coming with the fireworks show and some of the activities. And then we are still waiting on, even though you've passed the resolution for it, we're still waiting on our permit from the state to be approved for the beer sales during that event. So if those come in, we've got our, our vendor lined up and ready to go. We just have to get that permit back. So I'm, I'm being told from the chamber that they're very, very behind, but that if approved, we will have it before the event. So that's all I got. Thank you.
Sam?
Good evening. I just wanted to take a minute to alert you to some concerns that the city and the university have with the state budgeting process. There's some items in there that aren't directly related to budget, but there's rental registration, there's a, in the senate-approved version, there's a rental registration fee collection prohibition. It's a long way of saying that cities would not be allowed to collect fees for monitoring rental properties, and we obviously have a safety concern with that, with it being a, a, kind of a naive consumer market, I'll say, not, not akin to having a safe operation of rental occupancy. And so we want to try to continue that rental occupancy program with our inspections that City Manager was just referring to. So if you have contacts at the State House, they're getting ready to go through the concurrent process, where the House will review the senate budget and the conference committee will be set up. So we would like for that prohibition to be removed, obviously. And so we've, Miami University is actually partnering with us on some outreach on that. University has some concerning things as well they're dealing with. Jessica will refer to a couple of those things. So just want to alert you to those, and that budget process has to be adopted by July 1st. Our hope is that will be removed in conference committee. There's not a public testimony option for that, but for those of you that may have contacts in the general public, to contact any of the legislators that would be on that conference committee, that'd be helpful. Thank you.
To continue on the vein with some concerning areas in the proposed budget, the senate version of the budget also prohibits any local regulation of tobacco products and alternative nicotine products. So we've been working for several months and actually have a final draft to bring to you on July 18th for a tobacco retail license, and then improved enforcement of the tobacco and vape shops in town. And this, if passed, would just prohibit any sorts of regulation at all. And so the, also with the university that could have pretty big impacts in our community is there in the draft currently is that universities are prohibitive from requiring campus residency. So that just means that first and second year students would not have to live on campus. And so we believe that these are not budget items, that these are policy items, and that if they would like to address these policies, we would ask that they would bring them forward as legislation that allows public comment and have dialogue. But we would encourage, because of where we are in the process, you to please reach out to your legislators, both in the House and Senate, and share your concern on any of these topics. So that's the want-want news. But I do say on a positive note, since just a few weeks of the launch of our biodiversity campaign, we've had 815 blog views, which is like one of the biggest we've had. And actually, it's like on our web traffic, it's actually like homepage, biodiversity, jobs, and our haikus. And so I was like, well, yay! So our communication outreach is kind of, I think, touching a lot of people, and thank you for your support of that.
Nothing? Thank you.
Follow up on Sam, as you know, there's a number of different groups that are following what's going on in Columbus. I can tell you, the Ohio Municipal Attorneys Association is very, very concerned about a number of the proposed legislation, including the impact on home rule. So there's advocacy going on from a number of different sources.
Ben?
And I guess following up on all this legislative drama. You know, there was one day when I was watching my grandmother wash clothes. She didn't use a washing machine. She used a washing board and a line out in the back. I said, Grandma, it's modern times. Why are you doing this kind of stuff? She said, there are two reasons. One, the best way to clean dirt is agitation, and the best way to disinfect something is sunlight and air. And what does this mean, this statement that I just told all you guys? It seems as though a lot of things that get hidden in other things and legislation that's being proposed recently is coming from a dark place. Like, no one knows where these things are coming from, and then we find them hidden in other things that are seemingly good for the state or good for the municipalities. And then we find these particular provisions that are either etching away at home rule, etching away at voting rights, etching away at just regular human rights, and all these other things. And I believe, especially as an elected official, I have to tell my constituents, when you hear us talk about this stuff, it's not that we are just discussing boring, regular administrative types of things. We wanted to, we want to bring these things to your attention so that you can do the research and see where this stuff is coming from. If you start doing research on groups that propose legislation in Ohio, it gets downright scary. And some of the things that are being proposed right now are significantly preventing people that some of these groups are targeting to essentially prevent their rights to vote or reduce their power to vote, and change the course of decisions in towns, states, even the country. So, you know, as an American, I like to say, we have a lot of freedom. Don't let these, these dark groups, come from these dark places and hide things and do, you know, insidious acts, and, and get these things in place, and then you find out what they're really trying to do. Like, stop that stuff immediately, do the agitation, figure out where the. stop that stuff immediately. Do the agitation, figure out where the dirt comes from, and like make sure you expose that, bring the light to it, so that the things go away. So not all being said, I can't wait until the 4th of July celebrations. It'll be my eight-time riding in the car, and it's one of my favorite things, aside from the Ford show to do. So I can't wait for July 1. That's that.
Jason?
Great metaphor. I, I really appreciate that. And yeah, it's my interest, and they're not our interests. And that's all I have.
So I don't know that any of us have ever paid so much attention to what they did in Columbus. Once upon a time in which things, I wouldn't have agreed on all those things, but they were mundane, and they were democratic, and they may have come from a different policy place than where I would have come from, but I understood where they were coming from. All of us are getting an object lesson in all kinds of ways that democracy can be perverted. To log rule, policy shifts, to subvert the votes, to, I mean, I, I just, I, I think our legislators are good people, but they're not modeling democracy as the way I think it was envisioned to. And so, you know, we're just keep sending our, our resolutions to them. They clearly don't care about democracy. Otherwise, they wouldn't have, by resolution, created an August election that they themselves had just banned eight months prior, and it cost them, having $20 million or something, to Ohio voters to try to make it harder for us to amend our own constitution.
Okay. So, so I, thank you, Glenn, for your metaphor, because I think we need some scrubbing, some airing. On that point of view, like, I don't want to pat ourselves on the back, but I was just wanted to share, for example, I, I just recently discovered the new content on our website, See the Comprehensive Plan in Action, which is, we have not only created a comprehensive plan to engage people in as democratic a way as is possible over their goals, but now we're trying to hold ourselves accountable that we're doing the work that they've asked us to do. And, and as for Glenn's point, you know, like, some of what we do up here is kind of seems technocratic, but we, we're trying to be 100% sunshine to, so people can understand. That's sometimes why we talk things through, so people understand why did we just postpone there, what's going on, because, you know, the more transparency, the better the democracy. And so I want to thank, you know, who that was, whether it was you, or Sam, or Zach Moore, or...
Zach deserves credit.
Yeah, so it's really awesome. If you want to see what our goals are and how we're making progress on them, and hold us accountable to those things. So congratulations. Last thing, I just want to ask a question, which is, I raised this by email, which I know we're now in the budget process, and it's a very formative time in June. The budget process is guided by our goals that were set in January, and also departments are formulating those as budget requests. I had asked the question of, like, in the middle of that process, what if, for example, there's a specific item that's become known to us, or it's a small counselor item, like, always wanted to, you know, been working for a bicycle rack on the south side of, you know, a, a small ticket item. The question is, how does one that get in the hopper? Because by the time it's November, it's really hard to put anything in the hopper. We haven't had a work session. Is there a way, for example, I know departments have forms that ask them, what are your budgets? How do you justify this item based on the comprehensive plan? Is the process open to counselor requests? And I'm not saying something that deviates from what we agreed in January when we met for that, for one retreat, but if there's a, there's a, there's a budget item that we'd like to be considered?
Yeah.
Yeah. It seems like now's the time for us to make those suggestions, and what's the process by which we could do?
Well, I think if you have a project or something as small as a bike rack, just send out an email
Okay.
on that. I mean, we really, we're starting on the CIP process, but we've just begun. And, you know, we don't present anything to council formally until November, so we got a lot of time. But if you got, you know, a project that's not millions of dollars, let us know, and, you know, we'll, we'll discuss it and staff and get back to you. We might ask, though, that, you know, if it's a big project or a bigger project, that, you know, we get some sort of consensus from council, maybe a resolution, you know, so that we know that a majority of you support it. You know, we've gone through an interesting time with ARPA funds, and, you know, there are not going to be any more ARPA funds once we spend it all. So, and we have some big issues to deal with. The main one, of course, is staffing for the fire division. But we also have, I'm sure I'll see, hear, a request for employees in other departments, even though I've asked them to keep it at the same level. So, you know, we're just getting into it. And, you know, we have a lot of things that were brought up in the comp plan, and some things that weren't, that probably weren't known then. You know, we have the municipal parking garage that we now cannot use the top level. So we've got to look at how we're going to either build a new one or rehabilitate the existing one. That's a big project. And we also keep postponing what we're going to do with this building. You know, it's, it's dated, as we all know, and a lot of things out there. But to answer your question, I think I would just, if you have something in mind, send me an email, and then, you know, we'll look at it.
So, and, and some alignment with the goals and objectives and the comprehensive plan and priorities, and, and you're saying that some things that might be a small ticket item, it might be a matter of where might it come from in the budget, and if we're a larger ticket item, then we could have a process of whether it's work session or resolution. Okay. Thank you. I just, I know now is the formative time in the budget, and so I'd rather have that conversation we've been having in October, like some, some of the earlier. Thank you.
But, but let me say one last thing. I mean, we do supplemental appropriations throughout the year, so it doesn't mean that it's cast in stone and we can't change it at all. We change it, I don't know how many supplementals we did last year, maybe one a month. And so, you know, if council's really, you know, adamant about a project, a majority, I mean, we, I work for you, we work for you, and, you know, we want to meet your goals.
Thank you.
I'd want to thank all the people who take the time to pay attention. As you're saying, you've been following these meetings from January. Kathy is all over so many different topics, and is this fearless supporter and defender of people who are just struggling to survive. And it's something that is so helpful to live inside this bubble of Oxford, and it makes you feel like, okay, everything's going to be okay, we're doing all these right things. And then we realize how much the State House is overreaching and really affecting our bubble, like, get out of our bubble. So they just need to go. They just need to go. And so I think it's exciting to try to nurture people who will run for higher office. Maybe our chief will want to be, you know, the sheriff someday. I, maybe. He wouldn't do a Wardenburger, maybe. I don't know. I don't know whose opinion is, but, yeah, so I think it'll be exciting to see all these wonderful people there, and engaged to just get the crappy people out. So on that note, you have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
That's a bumper stick.